It is the 31st of March and this is the Town of Auburn Planning Board and we're open for our meeting. Would everybody please stand and salute the flag? We've got a bigger one. I salute the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag.
Dileges to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This is kind of funny. As a veteran, I'm kind of funny about the flag. Okay. And we have no ANIs. So all we have is a public hearing. And...
Long way to get there.
It was, John. Have to apologize for the delay.
Introduce him for the record.
Introduce yourself for the record.
John Stelma, Justin Stelma, for development on Prospect Street.
First, two earthfill special permits on ANI lots Prospect Street.
Okay.
Special permit hearing continued from our last meeting on March 3rd.
All right. And we have, what do we have, John?
I think Joanna has completed the review and I think they would just, did you press your comments, Joanna?
Okay. So everything is, is fine?
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, the board.
Any questions?
The engineers submitted their comments.
Okay.
And prior to last hearing, we've got the latest revisions from the applicant from March 4th. And we've received those since then for our last hearing. We didn't have a forum to make a vote. The town engineer's comments were met at that time. So this was a continued hearing because we didn't have a forum.
Okay. So any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? What's the flavor of the board?
Entertainer motion to close first.
I make a motion that we close the hearing.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded that we close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So what do we want to do with this?
Make a motion to approve the special permit.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the special permit and seconded. Any questions? Anyone from the audience have anything to say?
Through the chair, the audience can't comment now that the hearing's closed.
Oh, okay.
But also through the chair, standard conditions.
Yeah.
Presuming that those are location proposed or fill. Their findings with the special permit for earthfill removal and those following considerations are proposed earthfillings to the general character of the neighborhood, protection of the water supplies, act first, general safety of the public and public ways in the vicinity, all butters are notified prior to the hearing. And that plan meets all standards filed under chapter 14, section 5.0 of the Zonk's zoning by law. Any standard conditions, we may be looking at special permit be effective only afterwards recorded with the registry of deeds. Construction hours, board may want to consider construction hours for this project's standard, standard's usually 8 to 4:30 on Monday after Friday.
Saturdays.
Saturdays, 8 to noon. Okay. And no work Sundays or holidays. Correct. And developer comply with all decision conditions and other boards and commissions. Lot developed in accordance with the plans stated March 4th.
All right. So the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed?
I took the liberty of drafting a decision since we had the time from our last meeting. The board would like to review this. I shouldn't cut this for everybody, but it does entail everything I just read to you for conditions and findings for the special permit. There are two special permits that were filed for two separate ANI lots.
All right.
So do we need to do two votes? Yes, we do.
All right. So we need two votes?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So this is for...
Comes for the ANI lot 3.
Okay. This is for lot 3?
Yep. And the other one's for ANI lot 6.
And the other one's for ANI lot 6. Okay. 6 and 3. All right. So 3, we need to...
Which one did we already do, Matt?
We just worked on 3.
Okay. So we just have to do 6. All right. So on 6, I have a...
Make a motion, we close the hearing.
Sir.
Make a motion to, oh, second.
Okay. All those in favor, close the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Entertainer motion to approve?
Motion to approve the special permit 6.
Okay. Motion's been made to approve with the...
Similar conditions.
And seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. It's a vote.
The board can sign as they want. 10 miles, section, violation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Right? Okay. So it wasn't the end. It's a highway.
All right. Now we have Packard Farns, LLC, definitive subdivision. Once again, introduce yourselves for the audience.
I'm Mark Maitzenelli, I'm with the Albican. Christopher Blake, applicant in our Hartfield. Evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Christian Fallon, principal engineer with Thompson Fallon, here tonight representing the applicants who have filed a definitive subdivision. This is a continuance of a public hearing. Since the last public hearing, we have received some additional comments from the town consultant engineer Graves Engineering. We have responded back to the town consultant with revised plans and a comment letter, I believe all the board members have. Now, really in a nutshell, as far as the plans go, very minor revisions to the plans. Specifically, we added some test hole locations to the plans. And we made a minor revision to the stormwater basin detail, just as far as construction, when construction comes to take place, contractor can easily construct the basin. That was pretty much it as far as the plans go. The other details are more technical engineering requests that the consultant did have in regards to the stormwater calc. Since the last meeting, we've also received a letter from the town council in regards to the opinion of the access along Curtis Street. That's really, I think, the big topic here tonight that we kind of wanted to see before we go ahead and do anything along Curtis Street. Wanted to hear from the members and see how they felt in regards to this, this letter that the town council did provide. Certainly, as Thompson Fallon previously stated, the access, whether it's public or private, to this, to this development, we feel certainly adequate enough for, most importantly, is the safety of the residents along the way and then the future residents that would be living in this development, which is only going to be seven residential units, which we feel is negligible impacts to the roadway infrastructure along Curtis Street. I think town council references a law case here, North Landis Corp. versus the planning board, which we feel is totally inadequate. That, that law case was the development of a 447 acre piece of land with actually 447 houses. So the impacts from that to this, it's comparing apples to a grain of sand, really. I mean, it's, it goes totally, totally off the charts. Certainly, driving down Curtis Street can certainly use some improvements, but it's, like I say, I like to compare, you know, doing a lot of developments like this, improvements, we feel for Curtis Street are, you know, roadway, the pavements are all a mess. So that needs to get, you know, repaved. But as far as the access, which is the most important part, in the terms, the definition of roadway improvements with the subdivision control law, is the width. The width is the important thing because that's public safety. That can obviously be a concern of the planning board. And as we previously stated, we feel the width there is adequate.
What's the width there, Bill?
Narrowed down to about 15 feet in area of Stonebridge, Stonebridge Drive. Most of the road averages around 19 and 1/2 to 20 feet, then bottleneck's down. So I think...
Yeah, there is a little small section there that goes down to 15.
How long is that small section?
I would estimate 200 to 300 feet in length. I don't think it's any more than that. I mean, to me, that, that is a concern, only because 15 feet really isn't wide enough. You barely get two vehicles passing each other at 15 feet, never mind emergency vehicle during the winter when you lose some on the roadway too. So, you know, my recommendation would be that we provide a minimum of 20 feet, whether or not it's the developer do the work themselves or work with the town. We do have a project to reconstruct Curtis Street. If there's some way we could do that in cooperation with them, funding that additional 5 feet of widening through that area. We would need a cost estimate prepared. They could prepare the estimate, what it would cost using mass DOT standard weighted average bid prices for that widening. And I think it would, whether or not it's adequate or appropriate for them to then provide the funds through the planning board to contribute towards that project, or they could elect to do the work themselves.
Now, was there a question about ownership of that piece of property there?
In terms of the widening of roadway?
Right.
They would have to look at, I believe we have sufficient width in the right of way. Certainly, they would have to look at what the layout is to make sure that the work would be done within the right of way. I don't think that that part of it would necessarily be a problem. I think the width is sufficient. Typically, the narrowest right of way might be 33 feet. So even with a two rod road, and this is probably at least 33 feet.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, can you point out the section that you're talking about that's at 200 feet roughly?
Yeah, it's right coming down the section of Stonebridge, right in this area.
Yeah, that's what I was, yep.
Yeah.
Now, is that the section that's, that's private? Or is that...
No, the private section begins right here. This is private in here.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, does the town have the plans for the improvements of that area yet?
No, we don't, we don't develop plans. We always see the construction of the project.
Gotcha. It's design build.
Design build.
Okay. Certainly...
Well, I mean, I say, we're, we're going to be bringing services in and connecting, connecting to the road. Everything that we touch that comes out onto, onto the, onto Curtis is going to be taking all of the problems that are there now, we're going to take care of where the two things meet. The, the issue of how we move up the hill here from here up, I mean, if we could figure out a way of blending what the plans from the town and make us, make the two things sort of dovetail together so it comes out with a better road at the end of the day, well, of course, we're open to that. We have no, we have no issues about that. The burden falling on us completely to sort of fix the road from our property uphill, I mean, that's, that's complicated.
And through the chair, I don't think we're asking that. I think what we're suggesting is that you would fund the widening of roadway. So in some ways, it's, you're fortunate that we are proposing work, otherwise we may be looking for you to improve that section that you're widening. But I think because we're going to be reconstructing that section, that's town road, not the private road portion.
Right.
You would be funding the additional costs for the widening of that section of roadway.
Across the entire, across the entire frontage of Curtis, of our property at Curtis Street? Or up to the edge of...
No, the bottleneck.
Huh? Only at the bottleneck?
The bottleneck, yeah. No, it's not. Only at the bottleneck. It's 200 feet of the street that they're asking us to widen by 5 feet. I'm just curious, why didn't you ask the prior developer of Stonebridge to do that?
Because I wasn't here then. There you go.
I think they withdrew it before, before they got that far along.
No, that's a different subdivision. Talking about, we're talking about this.
Oh, Stonebridge.
Through the chair, I know you're saying, you stated it's seven houses, but actually, seven houses, I think there's only maybe seven that's down grading from there now. So essentially, you'd be doubling the traffic volume, not as large amount of vehicles. You know, typically, you might assume 10 vehicle trips per day, so maybe 70, but there's probably 70 now. And because things, it hadn't been asked in the past, I don't think it means that we shouldn't ask today. At some point, the width should be upgraded.
Now, you have to put in underground utilities to your place anyway, don't you? Water and sewer?
Yes. We would have to cut up the street that's directly in front of the new road that we're putting in, and obviously, we would want to repair that and redo that. I just, just doing 200 feet of a public road, widening it just seems a little extreme to me. But, so you're saying that we would only be paying for the 5 foot increase?
Through the chair, yes.
So I think the 5 feet, we would just be doing binder, because then they're going to come with top and probably overlay the whole thing.
So you're just asking us to widen it so to prep it for you to finish it? Okay.
That's about 15 times, which isn't, which isn't much.
Gravel, gravel binder.
And if that's, if that's the speed boat, so to speak, where we're trying to, trying to get to, we certainly want it, it's, it's good for everybody.
Yeah.
And if there's a way, we just, having the entire burden of the road falling on us is something we couldn't possibly sort of figure out how to manage. But if there's a cooperative venture, then...
Well, I'm allowed to jump into the other, I'm sure, issue that we've discussed through the chair, the section that's private. And I know, John, I don't know if you want to...
Sir, can you show us kind of on the plan, the section that's public, the section that's private?
Extension of this property line, Jonathan, is right here. This is public, this becomes private, and I believe their, their subdivision is in here.
Okay. Just to make sure I understand that, so you'd be asking them is to widen the public way?
Yes.
For what section? Just the public?
It would actually, it's actually up in, up in here. But the other issue is the fact that they are going from a private to a public way. And I know in the past, we've had projects, I think Santum Road, which was private road, and we, the board at that time had required upgrades to Santum Road for it to be accepted as a town road. And I think, even though this is a very short section, I think that that short section, whatever the board chooses that section to be, should, the same thing should be done so that when, when this roadway is accepted as a town road, is it roomy circle?
Mm-hmm.
When that's accepted, this small segment of Curtis Street would also be accepted so that you're going from a public way to a public way. I think it's a bad precedence to set to allow a public way off a private, private road.
So what we're talking about then is the widening of the public section of Curtis Street that you're talking about up there?
That...
And then the, bringing the private section of the road to a public standard is...
Which is pretty correct, isn't it? Yeah. And that's already about, just shy of 20 feet now.
I just measured it.
About 19 and 1/2.
Okay.
Yeah, 19 and 1/2 feet. So I wouldn't expect them to necessarily do a widening there because I think the width is sufficient. I think with the utility work they're going to do, I think...
It's going to get done anyway.
You're going to have, yeah, you have to repair that roadway anyhow.
Right.
So I would do that section of roadway. Again, it's not a long distance. And then when you go for acceptance of roomy circle, you could also have Curtis Street, that segment, accepted at the same time.
All right. Is the town intending that your project ends...
At the private.
At the private road?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they would have to upgrade to where their subdivision ends.
So typically, I don't, I don't know how it's done necessarily in Auburn. Is the private road, the right of way given to the town in fee? Or is the owner on each side?
No, not, it's not in fee on a private way.
It's just a layout?
Yes.
Okay. So do they then need the permission of the adjacent owners or...
I don't believe so, because, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but my understanding, having gone through this in the past, that if you own property, you have a right to pass and repass, and you have a right to upgrade as well.
Correct.
And also the, not to interject, but the land across from this proposed road is owned by the town.
Correct.
Unless it comes any longer to reach the property line, the Michigan's property.
It doesn't pass through the intersection.
Right. It's town land across the street.
Mr. Cody had brought up before, there's a pipe, a drainage pipe going underneath the road in that area. Is that part of a public project?
Yes, we're going to replace that as part of our project. We won't have any ponding there anymore.
Excellent.
That's the ultimate benefit, because it's crushed now.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Unless it's historic. Part of the, Mr. Chairman, is part of the, you know, plan board's condition, they can make it a condition that that part of the section, we create a street acceptance plan for that 100, whatever it is, 120 foot section that that becomes public, public right of way.
All right. Okay. Let's find...
Sounds like a group to compromise.
Just want to make the group aware that one of our members was absent last hearing and has signed paperwork sort of finding that the mull and rolls and effects, that allows a member to review minutes and the video from past meeting only one time if they're absent, just to make sure that they're able to vote on the hearing in the future. And Ms. Steinber has reviewed the minutes, reviewed the footage, and signed the documents so she is eligible to vote on the matter, should be cast in the future, but won't be able to miss future meetings on this matter, or else would lose eligibility to vote. Just want to make the board aware that this matters also before Conservation Commission, who has, Albican also knows, CONCOM had a request to continue their determination last meeting. I think the next meeting is April 8th.
Right. It's April 8th. And they're coming to do, and they're going to do a site visit on Saturday, the 4th. There was too much snow to, for them to review, but it seems that it's gone enough that they can actually view what they... Just like, let the board know that the filing with conservation is just a request for determination of applicability, which isn't a notice of intent, so there wouldn't be any conditions of, with that filing. It's either that you get a negative determination or a positive determination. And this, this project, it's outside their jurisdiction, but it's just a formality that we had to go through with filing with conservation.
In the event that the, through the chair, in the event that that happens, if they issue a positive determination, the Albican would then be required to file a notice of intent to require wetland flag and delineation of all available wetlands, not just the ones for that, have had future flags on, previous flags on past, on properties that have bought the land. I just want to make the board aware, section 3.2.4, wetlands boundary determination of the subdivision rules and regulations, just reads that the board strongly recommends the Albican secure abbreviated notice of wetland area delineation, it's an ANRAT, from the Auburn Conservation Commission before preparing and submitting preliminary subdivision plans. Reason being, in my opinion, and strictly my opinion, is if the Conservation Commission decides to make a few future modifications to a plan through the notice of intent process, and the planning board has already voted to accept the plan, the planning board would then need to require the applicant to come back to the planning board and submit a modification request. Just want to make the board aware of the procedure at hand.
Okay.
This would be subject to any other boards and conditions, and that's kind of, I guess, the risk they run by having gone through the process.
Correct. Correct. So if the plan is modified through conservation, they would have to come back to us for us to accept the modifications.
Through the chair, one other comment was, I think a while back, we had commented on the site distance along Curtis Street. I don't know if that had been addressed through...
We actually did. We, as part of the revised supplemental, and we did show the...
You proposed clearing?
Yep.
Okay.
There was a site distance we showed on the plan, which I believe the consultant reviewed.
So there'd be clearing provided to...
Where the new street is going to go, it's a little, a little bit...
Okay. It's only there. It's not on the, I guess it would be the west side. It looked as though there might need to be some clearing on the inside. Wasn't necessary? Okay.
Through the chair, Bill, Joanna, has your department a chance to read, to review the letter and responses that Thompson Fallon has submitted in response to Graves Engineering for review?
We had some, I think, minor hydrology comments, and I, we just received those calc's last week, so we haven't had a chance to finalize it.
So we would, probably wouldn't be opposed to if the board chooses to approve it, to make any, you know, review and approval conditional?
Yeah, they were, they were pretty much...
Because it looked as though the hydro, they hadn't met, the standards, they didn't have a lot of the backup information?
Yes.
Okay. There were some graphic issues about making sure that was noted completely on the plans. That was the, that was the...
Some of the hydrology calculations, we just needed some backup information that involves, I think, TSS calculations. I'm not really sure if those were submitted.
Yep. Would you be comfortable with...
Yep. I think...
Okay. So the condition would be?
The board wouldn't, would not have to determine their conditions tonight if they chose to close the hearing? They can render a decision at a future meeting.
So if we, if we have a chance to review the hydrology calculations and have completed the, addressed all of our comments, then it wouldn't have to be a condition?
Okay. So would that require them to come back to us again? Or... If, if the plan before us today is changed in any way or modified, they would have to come back to us.
The audience, anyone in the audience have anything to say? Yeah.
Frank Cole. I live at 333, and I'm, I'm just wondering, on this effect, you're talking about Tim doing some work up here in front of my house? So that has no material effect on me? Because I'm on the, the public road.
Right. What we would be asking them to do is the area where it narrows down to 15 feet to widen to 20 feet. They're going to have to look at... Where the existing property lines are and determine where that can be done, on which side of the road, and grading also.
Yeah, it's going to make sense to do it on the town side anyway. So I don't, I don't see that being an issue, but as far as, you know, getting any takings or anything.
Shouldn't be any issue. I mean, in terms of, I know I've spoken to you before about your drainage, separate from the, their project, we are proposing drainage improvements as well.
And the, the other question that I have is, this here is private, and, and if they are going to make improvements to this project, how far onto the private street are you proposing to do it? Is it, their new street is up here, and, but this, this here is 71, there's the driveway to 71. Are you proposing that they improve the street to this driveway?
Like, I think that's going to be the board's decision.
I don't think so. Yeah.
So it doesn't, you know, matter, the difference how far down on the private road that they want to go?
We would propose that right to our roadway, which the subdivision control law, you know, allows the board to have the applicant.
So you're...
Wouldn't go as further as that.
Going down as far as 71 then?
Yeah, not even. Probably like halfway in between 71 and the property.
About 110 feet.
Yeah.
That's the 71 house right there they, they brought.
Okay.
So right before...
Just, just, just wondering if you were going to go just to the street or...
They're going to go just to, down here.
To 71?
Yeah, just to 71.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Daniels, have something?
I can't hear, 70 Curtis. I have a question. Actually, it's to Mr. Coyle and then to the...
Why don't you come follow me down?
Before I can hear you. For 200 feet, am I reading the plan correctly? It's starting up here and going to there, to the center of the exit road. There's two roads, and then road and out road. I'm reading it right. It's the 200 feet. And that's going from public into private. Right? Now, we only got half a lane on the exit road. Am I correct? Come here, here. Still wonder if he goes dead center in the middle of the exit.
So this is one road?
Yeah, but I'm saying if you look at it...
Oh, okay. Yeah.
You know, if you're looking at the road...
Okay, sure. If you add a line, yes.
In and out.
Okay. I'm not sure I follow you. Oh, the 200 foot, site distance?
Right.
This is a, this is a site distance?
Yeah, but I'm just saying it goes like halfway into there.
All right, okay. Let's go.
Just want to make the board aware that one of our members was absent last hearing and has signed paperwork sort of finding that the Mullen rules in effect that allows a member to review minutes and the video from past meeting only one time if they're absent just to make sure that they're able to vote on the hearing in the future. And Ms. Steinberg has reviewed the minutes, reviewed the footage, and signed the documents so she is eligible to vote on the matter. She should be cast in the future but won't be able to miss future meetings on this matter or else would lose eligibility to vote. Just want to make the board aware that this matters also before Conservation Commission, as the applicant also knows. CONCOM had a request to continue their determination last meeting. I think the next meeting is April 8th.
Right, it's April 8th. And they're coming to do, and they're going to do a site visit on Saturday, the 4th. There was too much snow to, for them to review, but it seems that it's gone enough that they can actually view what they...
Just like, let the board know that the filing with Conservation is just a request for determination of applicability, which isn't a notice of intent, so there wouldn't be any conditions with that filing. It's either you get a negative determination or a positive determination. And this project, it's outside their jurisdiction, but it's just a formality that we had to go through with filing with Conservation.
In the event that the, through the chair, in the event that that happens, if they issue a positive determination, the applicant would then be required to file a notice of intent to require wetland flag and delineation of all available wetlands, not just the ones for that, have had future flags on, uh, previous flags on past, on properties that have bought the land. I just want to make the board aware, Section 3.2.4 Wetlands Boundaries Determination of the Subdivision Rules and Regulations, just reads that the board strongly recommends the applicant secure abbreviated notice of wetland area delineation, it's an ANRAT, from the Auburn Conservation Commission before preparing and submitting preliminary subdivision plans. The reason being, in my opinion, and strictly my opinion, is if the Conservation Commission decides to make a few future modifications to a plan through the notice of intent process and the planning board has already voted to accept the plan, the planning board would then need to require the applicant to come back to the planning board and submit a modification request. Just want to make the board aware of the procedure at hand.
Okay.
This would be subject to any other boards' conditions, and that's kind of, I guess, the risk they run by having gone through the process.
Correct. Correct. So if the plan is modified through Conservation, they would have to come back to us for us to accept the modifications.
Through the chair, one other comment was, I think a while back, we had commented on the site distance along Curtis Street. I don't know if that had been addressed through...
We actually did. We, as part of the revised supplemental, and we did show the...
You proposed clearing?
Yep.
Okay.
There was a site distance we showed on the plan, which I believe the consultant reviewed.
So there'd be clearing provided to...
Where the new street is gonna go, it's a little, a little bit...
Okay, it's only there. It's not on the, I guess it would be the west side. It looked as though there might need to be some clearing on the inside. Wasn't necessary? Okay. Okay.
Through the chair, Bill, Joanna, has your department had a chance to read, to review the letter and responses that Thompson-Parlin has submitted in response to Graves Engineering Fair Review?
We had some, I think, minor hydrology comments, and I, we just received those calc's last week, so we haven't had a chance to finalize it.
So we would, probably wouldn't be opposed to, if the board chooses to approve a site, to make any, you know, review and approval conditional?
Yeah, there were plenty of them.
Because it looked as though the hydro, they hadn't met the standards, they didn't have a lot of the backup information?
Yes.
Okay. There were some graphic issues about making sure that was noted completely on the plans. That was the, that was the...
Some of the hydrology calculations, we just needed some backup information that involves, I think, TSS calculations. I'm not really sure if those were submitted.
Yep. Would you be comfortable with the condition?
Yep.
Okay, so the condition would be?
The board wouldn't, would not have to determine their conditions tonight if they chose to close the hearing. They can render a decision at a future meeting.
So if we, if we have a chance to review the hydrology calculations and have completed the, addressed all of our comments, then it wouldn't have to be a condition?
Okay.
So would that require them to come back to us again?
If, if the plan before us today is changed in any way or modified, they would have to come back to us.
The audience, anyone in the audience have anything to say? Yeah.
Frank Cole. I live at 333, and I'm, I'm just wondering, on this effect, you're talking about Tim doing some work up here in front of my house. So that has no material effect on me. Because I'm on the public road.
Right. What we would be asking them to do is the area where it narrows down to 15 feet to widen to 20 feet. They're gonna have to look at where the existing property lines are and determine where that can be done, on which side of the road, and grading also.
Yeah, it's gonna make sense to do it on the town side anyway. So I don't, I don't see that being an issue, but as far as, you know, getting any takings or anything.
Shouldn't be any issue. I mean, in terms of, I know I've spoken to you before about your drainage, separate from the, their project, we are proposing drainage improvements as well.
And the, the other question that I have is, this here is private, and, and if they are going to make improvements to this project, how far onto the private street are you proposing to do it? Is it, their new street is up here, and, but this, this here is 71, there's the driveway to 71. Are you proposing that they improve the street to this driveway?
Like, I think that's gonna be the board's decision.
I don't think so. Yeah.
So it doesn't, you know, matter, the difference, how far down on the private road that they wanna go.
We would propose that right to our roadway, which is subdivision control law, you know, allows the board to have the applicant.
So you're...
Wouldn't go as further as that.
Going down as far as 71 then?
Yeah, not even. Probably like halfway in between 71 and the...
About 110 feet.
Yeah.
That's the 71 house right there they brought.
Okay.
So right before it is.
Just, just, just wondering if you're gonna go just to the street or...
They're gonna go just to, yeah.
To 71?
Yeah, just to 71.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels, have something?
I can't hear 70 Curtis. Good question. Actually, it's to Mr. Coyle and then to the...
Why don't you come follow me down?
Before I can hear you. For 200 feet, if I'm reading the plan correctly, it's starting up here and going to there to the center of the exit road. There's two roads, and then road and out. I'm reading it right. It's the 200 feet. And that's going from public into private. Now, we only got half a lane on the exit road. Am I correct? Come here, here. Still wonder if it goes dead center in the middle of the exit.
So this is one road?
Yeah, but I'm saying if you look at it...
Oh, okay, yeah.
You know, if you're looking at the road.
Okay, sure. If you add a line, yes.
In and out.
Okay. I'm not sure I follow you. Oh, the 200 foot site distance.
Right.
This is a, this is a site distance.
Yeah, but I'm just saying it goes like halfway into there. Now, how do we achieve the other part of the road, which would end up going into the private section?
Not sure.
Are they gonna make it wider?
Well, this section, through the chair, he's pointing to where the subdivision, proposed subdivision is coming into Curtis Street, that area where it comes in now is about 19 and a half feet.
Where?
So this area where the road, the new road would be coming into Curtis Street.
That's 16.
It narrows down to about 16, any further in this area.
Yeah, because right, right here before my house is 14.
Well, we're gonna do...
And it stays 14.
We're gonna meet with them, and I think their engineer also measured today. You said you measured, you had...
Yeah, with the roadway, 19 and a half.
19 and a half. We're gonna make sure that this area, wherever it begins, because I know it begins in the, in the general area of their subdivision towards, and just past Stonebridge, is 20 feet.
Correct.
So whatever that distance becomes, I'm estimating 200 to 300 feet. I don't think it's any more than that. But we'll, we're gonna, we can meet with them if necessary. They can go out and do field measurements and survey to make sure they...
Well, I'm saying that we had another winter like we just went through, which hopefully never happens again. When we were down to one lane, up and down, and the fire truck and the ambulance had trouble coming down, and now we've got this thing coming in, and now you're gonna cut back into here. That would lead on to Bill's department, where they'd have to plow brim to brim all the time. You couldn't be the 2, 3 feet off. And another question I had, when they created the Stonebridge, you got a stop sign here, but all those people up there never stop there. What's the control down here on the new road?
Well, we have, we have nothing to do with Stonebridge at this point.
No, but I'm saying now, with the new road, whatever it's gonna be, what's the control up there? Is there an actual stop sign?
Through the, through the chair, you technically have to have a stop sign. You legally have to stop when going from a secondary road to a primary road. You have to come to a complete stop. So I think that becomes more of a policing issue with people not stopping. It's more of an enforcement issue.
And now when they're saying utilities, so if this is going uphill, and while it doesn't go uphill, how are we gonna, the drainage, the catch basin?
I'll defer that to their engineer. I believe it's a high spot. But if you wanna go with the drainage for Mr. Daniels...
Sure, it's all, actually, it's all being gravity fed back into this system here.
You wanna, can you go over the plans where the catch basins are?
We did that last time. Last time, didn't you tell us that all of the drains were pitched towards that?
Yeah, everything goes towards the back of the site.
Yeah, to the back of the site. None of it's going out the front of the site. Nope. So it's not gonna be anything coming out of the road from that project.
You want me to show them on...
Yeah, let it show quickly.
May I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Because I, I live there. And when they're, what they're talking about, you know, everything's going to the back, but there's a hill. So water flows downhill. So I'm, I'm confused as to how they're gonna get the water to go through the hill.
He's gonna show us.
Frank, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so this is the roadway profile. It shows the catch basins, which align with the road. So basically, you have the catch basins down here, and it's grading, although the road's going up, your drainage is going down.
Okay.
So it's going from gravity from here to here, and then this is quite a bit down. You're at elevation 571 down here, you're up at a 594 here. So as far as the water goes, you're at 23 feet difference in elevation between the pipes here and then your basin.
So that would leave the entire street of Curtis Street with four catch basins to divert all the water that comes down the street and the water that your project will end up sending into Curtis, correct?
They're not sending any into Curtis.
We're not sending any into Curtis.
You're not sending in, but you're building catch basins at the end?
And it's going back, back at the lot.
Right, five altogether.
Yeah, but where are the ones near Curtis? The ones from Curtis right at the intersection.
Through the chair, and Town is also, or who's gonna be improving the...
The Culver.
The Culver.
The Town is doing that. They're proposing drainage on, on their subdivision road.
Right. We kept, the, the water comes down, gets caught in the catch basin, and actually the pipe is tipped back towards the back of the site. So there's a loop involved. None of the, none of the volume of water actually drains onto Curtis Street, and that's, that was the point.
Exactly. Their stormwater calculations met the Town's requirements, and also, not only did we design it as engineers, but also Town's consultant reviewed it.
So you said it was fine? So that's fine.
Did Friday's storm that we just went through alter your calculation?
They're designed for, through the chair, for 100-year storm events.
What was Friday's calculated at? Where it went, 6 inches of water coming down the street for 4 hours? That would be pretty close.
I don't think Friday was anywhere near 100-year storm event.
No. I, I remember when the, when the, the new field that put it at the high school had 4 inches of water on it. That was a 100-year storm.
We, we, Fuller was busy Friday, just towing cars up because they were flooded.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Daniels, I think if there are systemic issues on Curtis Street, that's not something that this board is gonna be able to affect, nor is it something I think the developers should have to fix either. I think, you know, first of all, they're gonna be improving the public way, they're going to be providing all of the drainage to be self-contained on their property, so any water that starts rushing towards Curtis Street will be caught, brought back to their own detention ponds, you won't have, so it won't be going in and making your condition worse. In addition, they're gonna be upgrading a substantial portion of the private street, which is really a benefit to every owner who's beyond that, who is technically right now responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that road. So you're getting a decent deal here, and I think this is, in the end of the day, gonna make things a lot better for you. I think we really tried to address all your concerns.
Okay, one, one last one, and then I'm out of here. In your diagram, is gas gonna be in the street brought up to your project? Natural gas? It entered Mr. Cole's house.
Is there any gas in that area?
Yeah, it entered Mr. Cole's house.
Further up towards the beginning of the street, there'll be quite a ways to...
Well, Mr. Cole's house.
That's something that we would...
It doesn't go to his house.
I didn't know there was natural gas anywhere in the area.
And that gas company's not...
Not inclined.
Not inclined to, because I wanted it on my house, and it's just at the top of the hill. They wanted $35,000 to run it just down the hill because of ledge and everything else. I just buy a lot of oil for 35. Thank you, Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Introduce yourself.
Mark Soliger, in the Curtis Street.
Okay.
Now I understand the water thing.
Okay, you got the water thing out of the way.
Somehow, I went to speak to Mr. Coyle, but when they put in Southbridge Street, it was an engineered grade, and it's totally undermined Curtis Street. And I've yearly, over-yearly pictures of the water that comes off of Stonebridge coming down there is totally undermined, the, the whole street. And that street was paved by the town of Aldern, so back about 16 years ago, there is a problem. Irrespective of that, but I understand what you're doing on the water, so thank you. The problem I have really is, we're talking about the subdivision going here and everything north. Okay, not south. Okay, and the subdivision was, literally states a safe access, you know, to everything to the subdivision and around it. I've not heard about anything down south for the safety. There is no line of sight this way. I mean, you go by here, you take your life in your hands. If you're coming down here with the hill, you don't have line of sight down the hill coming on up. Okay, so I don't know how you have 200 feet, because this is, starting here, comes to be a pretty steep hill. Okay, so line of sight is next to impossible. I barely could see past the house while coming up the street. Okay, so that's one thing. The other thing, we put a lot of houses back, sorry, I'm down here. We put a lot of houses back here, and this whole section here, okay, which is narrow, okay, is rather destroyed by the trucks, moving trucks just trying to get in and everything else. I don't see from the plans, and I'm not that type of engineer, so I'm sorry, how you actually turn any of the fire trucks adequately in that space and that, to make that truck turn in and out. You know, and I've seen drawings before where you take a fire truck, you draw it, and you try to do that, and I tried to do that, and I couldn't do it. Okay, and I was just doing PowerPoint. You probably have much more sophisticated ways of doing it, but I could not take an average pumper, okay, and actually get it in and out of that area. Now, you say it's 19 and a half feet. I could not pass the engineer today, that was right behind me. Okay, his 5 series, BMW, 3 series, then not the way this car is in the world, I could not get behind you. You got the new car, and you left, right? I was following behind you. So it's still narrow there. I still don't see how, from the public safety point of view, that you actually are able to do that. So I'm concerned going south for safety, not north. There was also, back when, I think it was pre-Fontaine, in 1981, they were trying to do the same subdivision. And back then, maybe go back to the records, part of the problem was the water pressure on the street. Okay, and back, and we were talking about that, you neither have residential sprinklers in those houses. Because of the water pressure on the street, these sprinklers, it was not adequate at that time. So again, back to public safety, looking at that. So, so that's on the safety. I implore you to look down south. You don't need, one means access to a public way, I understand that. Okay, so that's going north, but since we've opened up, we're only south of to Greenwood, okay, we have a lot more traffic on the road. We don't have, shall we say, the best traffic on the road. There's usually kids screeching in the old truck or a Jeep or something coming up and down there. Okay, so if you have a problem at Southbridge, we're gonna have a problem there. We need to really investigate what that looks like. The other thing, and they did do a lot of searching for myself and Westlock and around, they did find the work that you found and things like that, and there's this big debate about putting a road into a private way also. Okay, and I think it's very interesting that this board has found a way to get around putting a road in a private way by assuming that this area here, oh, you moved that make, is gonna be a public way. Currently, a public way is a private way. Okay, and this is the problem I had back when the A and R went through a post land, is that this board, okay, assumed the same thing and did the A and R. Okay, but tell me if I'm about the A and R, it's too late for me to go to Land Corps and argue with them. Okay, you can't assume that this is a private, a public way. It isn't, that has not been accepted by the town. Okay, the town hasn't even voted about giving, doing it, because this is on the town land on this side. Okay, so I see a problem that we jumped ahead in the process of assuming that this private way is now public. Okay, I find that illogical, okay?
Actually, we have been assumed that that part of the road is, is public.
Well, that's what...
What he's doing, he's bringing it up to standard so that it can be made a public road.
Okay, so...
From his developed point to where it is not a public road, they're going to rebuild that so that it is, meets the standards for a public road. And then the town is working on the upper part of the road and rebuilding that. So from the upper part where it disassembles, which is probably up on Packard York Street, the town is going to take care of that, and then he's gonna help the town fill, take care of the part that's private to where it goes through.
My understanding, I understand that. My understanding is in order for a new road to go to a, a public way, it needs to go to a public way, not through a private way to a public way.
Right, well, that's what they're doing. They're bringing, when he has his accepted, it's gonna go into that piece of the road which is going to be put on, the town meeting to accept it at the same time.
But you're doing it backwards. This, this, by, by the statutes, this state, in order to put that road into, to create that road, it needs to have access to a public way. Okay, it doesn't have access to a public way today.
Through the chair, I think the planning board reached out to Town Council, and I, I think if he, he didn't come back with that opinion...
No, it would be a different thing.
Different, you know, there's a lot of case laws going both ways.
After reading this, I don't really know what his opinion is.
And I would have to say that after reading, I can have the same opinion. You go either which way.
So, I agree with his point, that it needs to be, should be the public road first and approved.
That's part of the...
And Bill, how far, where are you gonna improve West Street? I mean, Curtis Street, how far are you...
We're stopping right at the projection of this line, we're stopping here. So he would only be doing this portion from here to here.
Okay, and so then, if you come down to the bottom of Curtis, where you take a left on South Hall, there's not any probability that anyone there will be asking for a subdivision or anything, or could they sell that con a lot and do the same thing? Because what my question is, is then we're gonna ask someone else to improve the road from where it isn't approved on their site, on part of their site frontage, just to get what they want passed down lower off of the town. And I don't think that's right. That's why I said in terms of what distance needs to be upgraded, that, that's really the planning board's discretion. I think it should be the full frontage.
Mr. Chair, I, I just wanna make, talk about a couple things here. First of all, on your argument, where I lose it is that you're okay with, you don't agree that it's okay to put it into a private street unless he improves it to your house, which...
I never said that.
To me, it's a little bizarre.
I never, no, I never said that at all. All I said, okay, I don't, that was really a bad, you know, misinterpretation. What I said is that the proposal was to improve this, okay, add the road in, right, and then when this went to be made public, we'd make this public. My statement is, is that, if my interpretation of what I've read is that to get, to put a road in, you need to have access to a, a public way, okay, this is not public at the time of the decision of this board. And that, that's my problem. I'm not talking about, this is safety down there. I didn't talk about improvements or anything else down there, I'm just talking...
Where is your house?
I'm at the, I'm over here.
But I think there's, there's something to, I mean, at the end of the day, I think what's happening, we're, the road is gonna be improved. First of all, you're not gonna get a developer, any developer, to pay to upgrade a road to a, to be a public way in the hopes that then Town Meeting will approve it and then they can do their project. I think the way we're trying to structure this is to say that it's approved pending their acceptance, that they will then bring it up to that standard, and we would then hope that public, Town Meeting would do as we would hope they would do, which would be to accept that road. I don't know that it's a reasonable request of this developer, any developer, no matter the location, to say that we want them to, to upgrade a road on faith in that it will then be done. I think, you know, there's only so much they can do. I think they're bringing it up to the public standard, I think that's a good benefit for the people in the neighborhood over there. I think you're gonna, you're gonna benefit from the fact that this road has been upgraded.
I don't think I'll see anything benefit or not. Okay?
Furthermore.
My, my statement is simply, is that the town has to agree, because they own the land, okay, to make public, okay, that, this part of the road. Okay, my contention is, you can say yes, so you own the other half of the road, right? So the town, okay, and it's the Town Meeting, I believe, that has to go through to do that, needs to approve that. I don't understand why that doesn't happen before this project gets okay. That's my contention.
Because what you're saying is, what if it didn't?
Exactly. What happened if it didn't?
Well, through the chair, if they didn't accept that portion of Curtis Street, I would assume they're not gonna accept Rumney Cir, Rumney Circle either. So I think that it, it would be safe to probably assume that they're going to assume, approve Rumney Circle, that they're going to approve this short section of Curtis Street.
Same process that any subdivision in Auburn has had to follow, as long as I've known.
If they don't approve it, it remains private, the same as, as Matt is saying, as any other subdivision. And there's a lot of case law, and this one is that a subdivision can't open to a subdivision that is private, that it's private.
So I think what they're saying, though, that is, should the Town Meeting elect not to accept that section of Curtis Street, they would also then not elect to accept Rumney Circle, the whole area would remain a private way, and there wouldn't be a public way going into a private way. You would have a private way going into a private way. The owners of that roadway would be responsible for the maintenance. The owners of Curtis Street would be...
Okay, that means, simple background to the argument, can you put a road into a private way? Okay, and the case law is very ambiguous on that.
I think, I believe, when the planning board through the chair reached out to Town Council, I believe that he's kinda put it back in the planning board's hands for their decision.
I'm just saying, it seems a lot of faith that things are gonna happen, a lot of hope, and maybe we've done in the past, okay, but... hope, and maybe we've done in the past, okay? But I didn't think we'd actually buy the post property either.
The case law-
And that went through.
The case law referenced in town council's letter through the chair, as Mr. Frum pointed out, is for a four hundred house subdivision cited several safety concerns given the increased traffic.
Yeah, that's something different. I'm not bringing something else up. That was by the, I forget what the graphic had here.
The main thing here-
Subdivision law, you know, really went out. I understand that. That was my safety thing. This is something else about Massachusetts is really squirrely on private ways, okay? There's a lot of strange laws, and they conflict each other, okay, with the common law. And when I look through it, okay, in order to do this, you need to get approval from everybody that's on the private way, okay, or you have to make it a public way, okay? One or the other, right? You have a way of making it a public way, okay, and I don't understand why that is not pursued first.
Well, I don't think we're gonna require them to make it a public way before they start construction on the project. You're just delaying the project.
That's, that's not my, my problem. The problem is-
No, it's not your problem, but it's their problem.
If the law states something, and it's supposed to go in this certain manner-
We try to work with developers, and we try to work with businesses. I mean, we've had a reputation of not doing that, and we're trying to do it at this point. And they've come in with a plan, and they've actually met all of the requirements of the peer review. They've met most of the requirements of the town engineer, and they're going to conservation. I don't know what else they can do. Seriously. I mean, they're going to widen, they're gonna take care of the road. The town's gonna take care of their part of the road. They're gonna widen it a little bit, and they're gonna, when they go to accept their problem, their road, they're going to see if they can accept the town too. And I don't see why the town wouldn't do that. The town owns the pot, land on one side, and they own the land on the other side, so you don't have to take land from any of the butters. And what they're doing is they're improving Curtis Street. I mean, Curtis Street's a mess. Let's face it.
Also, the reason, it was part of the reason for accepting a public way, and I don't wanna get too far into this, because we've talked enough about it-
Yeah.
Is so we could maintain it. Could remove the snow as a town entity instead of-
Well, as a town, the, the town has the right, and actually, it need to maintain it for public safety and everything else, from snow removal and everything else along those lines. They have that right, so that's, should be taken out of this picture.
That's what sways town meeting votes.
Right, I understand that, but they're doing it anyway.
But the town does plow private roads just for the safety progress.
Exactly.
Because when I was on a dirt road, my house was built on a dirt road, the town plowed the dirt road so that they get fire engines and police cars out because I was way in the woods. So, the town is gonna maintain the road. I mean, there, there are already plans to improve the road. They're helping the town improve the road. They're working together to improve the road, and I think that's all we can reasonably ask of them.
Through the chair, through the chair, I believe, a couple of other questions have been raised. I know the consultant engineer wanted to address the turning radii and the site distance issue, and the water pressure. I can address the water pressure.
Sure. The, the turning radii, as I previously stated, the subdivision was designed in accordance with Auburn's subdivision rules and regs in regards to radius, which is a national, you know, standard for radiuses for intersection with roadways, which designed in accordance with the regs means it meets requirements for any kind of, you know, apparatus, fire apparatus to get into, get into the site. So, that was done. Sometimes, you know, people don't have the land, they may see a waiver from the planning board, which can limit that, but in this case, it's not the case. We do provide adequate access. And along, going further down, we do actually provide that site distance of two hundred feet both ways. But keep in mind, the, there's, there's nobody going that way at this point right now, but we still do provide access there. And as far as the improvements go, you mentioned the subdivision control law. Subdivision control law says provide access to your property. It doesn't mean provide access to a, to a private roadway that dead ends to nowhere. For any future development, the planning board will have another developer sitting in my shoes and seeking the same request that you're seeking.
But why should he go up and do part of your frontage?
It's a, it's a private, it's a private-
I'm, what I'm saying is, you're only going to where you're going into your property. Then there's a balance that goes down to you where your property ends. Then if, around the corner, nobody ever does anything, but the town develops South Hall Road to make lots and stuff there, and they're gonna have to do that. Why should they be paying for, I believe, what you should, to get this and to go into it, you should pay for the entire-
That area is about, you know, nineteen, nineteen and a half feet along there, so I mean to-
I mean, upgrade it to whatever the subdivision or the town roads would be.
Well, through the chair, if, and I'll just throw it out there, I believe you're correct. The width is probably within reason now, whether or not, if, if you wanted to pursue that portion to be accepted, I mean, ultimately, I think the goal would be to have Curtis Street all the way down to the, to south, to the sharp curve of South Hall to be accepted at some point. But unfortunately, the town can't use public funds to upgrade that. So, if the developer wanted to, I believe the pavement in that area is much better.
Yeah, that portion.
Wouldn't, you'd probably overlay that section of roadway and then petition. I don't know if-
That's, this is, this is front of my house. This is, this is in front of the-
This is down here, this whole ice-
Yeah, that's where the down, that's where the down road is.
I thought that's what you're saying.
That's where the spruce trees are.
The gentle-
He's talking about in front of my property.
Actually, if you cut some of the branches off, the road would stay in better shape with all the shade.
Oh, that's where it's coming from.
It's just a point of reference.
It's on the other side.
Okay.
We did receive-
I'm sorry, but, so if that's something the board wanted to discuss with the, with the proponent, to overlay that segment along their frontage, and I think what Mr. Brooks is talking about is, in the future, if anyone wanted to upgrade further, whether or not would they then have to go to the frontage of other properties that, beyond where they may be working? And I, and I understand that, that point as well. It's, it's not an easy decision that the board has, but.
And what's the length of that? I think the applicant would certainly consider making it public all the way to the, to the frontage. You know, that, that being said, then if the town had, you know, funding to do with just the overlay, that's something that-
Well, that's, well, what is it that you would be doing?
We would present the plans to make it acceptable. Is that nineteen and a half feet?
I think it was the old way as well.
Wouldn't that entail a taking from the other people?
Or the, that, this was seventy, would have to agree to that, whoever owned seventy-
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a, a taking.
Rooms within, room within the north right away.
Right, within the right away.
In the north.
You have to upgrade it for, to go to town meeting, in, for, they'll go to the planning board for recommendation. They'll go to town engineer, myself, for recommendation. And it wouldn't be able to recommend approval if there's no upgrade done to the roadway. If they went in, overlaid that portion, then there was, there's improvements that are being completed that we could potentially go in and recommend approval or acceptance to the entire frontage, is where I was going with that. But without any improvements by somebody, it's hard to go in there and recommend approval, because that puts a lot of other people who live on private roads in a similar situation to say, well, just accept my road too then. You know, there is a requirement that some improvements be done.
The other item, Bill, through the chair, was the water pressure. We did receive a letter from the Alhamb water. Their only concern was using a certain kind of hydrant. I believe their system had been upgraded.
They upgraded the, the line on Packard Chalk.
So, as I said, if we go back to those last, if you still had the meeting minutes from that time when this property was gonna be subdivided, I was wondering, concerned that was after the six inch pipe was put in.
You said, you mentioned that nineteen eighty-
I think it was ninety-one.
No, the last time Curtis Street was tied was nineteen seventy-six, when they put the sewer pipe.
No, we were started after that because they-
No, it wasn't. I'm sorry.
Mr. Hill, please. So, when we was upgraded from four inch to six inch for, part of the, the purchase of the land for posts-
I was just curious.
Okay, it was repaved at that point. And, you know, it was after that where, I think it was pre-Fontaine, the developer came in, and that was when they, that was the buyer chief that requested.
All right, okay. Thank you. Yes.
In the interest of trying to uncomplicate things, I'm, I'm sitting here and I'm just wondering why it would, wouldn't be possible to make the private part of Curtis Street part of the subdivision. Then the, the Curtis Street improvement plus the street going in would all be one.
Except that they don't own that piece of street. The town owns it. Or somebody owns, town owns half of it anyway, and they own the other half.
I think what Mr. Cole's trying to say is this section of road, in addition to the entrance of a post road, is that correct? I think that's effectively what we're doing. If we condition that that section of Curtis Street be brought to that standard, we'd be essentially conditioning that they bring that up to the same standard, and with the understanding that town would likely accept the entire piece of the package, even if done in two separate votes. But I think it's the same concept.
You're saying, sir, I understand it. You're saying that you cannot connect the approval of the two, you know, as far as, you know, accepting the, the town accepting the project, and just tying the two things together.
Well, I don't think we can, we can't do that because that's a town meeting decision. But what we can do, I think, is what we're trying to do, which is to say that we want Rumney Circle upgraded, and we also want the connection of Curtis Street that is private upgraded as well, in the hopes that then the town meeting would accept all of them.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I found words that, you know.
It's the same concept. Through the chair, general interpretation.
A tight connection.
Thank you. Sir, you had something?
Yes, I did.
Okay, then we're gonna move along.
Not to be against this project.
Okay.
Okay, it's their business. But how come, like he said years ago, they wanted to put four houses in here. Nobody objected to it. Suddenly, they wanted seven, and it was turned down by the land bank. How are these people getting away with it?
The original nineteen ninety-six-
I wanna know how come all of a sudden they became seven?
Huh? Was withdrawn in nineteen ninety-six by the applicant. It never was approved or denied. So, there wasn't this board, it was different members.
I understand that. But how are these people getting away with it?
Well, they're not getting away with it because their subdivision meets the requirements of the subdivision control law.
Why didn't it meet before?
We don't know if it met it before.
Well, it wasn't then before, and the land-
Oh, yes, it was. I've been here forty-three years, and I know what's going on.
It wasn't these people that came before.
I didn't say it was these people.
And also wasn't this board.
No, it wasn't this board, and it wasn't these people, and what, they didn't pursue it. In other words, they withdrew it.
They didn't tell anybody.
No, no.
Another thing I wanna ask before I go. This is my house here, right? This is their project. Right now, I'm getting tons of water right across here from this property. How are you gonna grade this property, this stoppage? Are you gonna do any grading here where the driveway is?
It's, it's going into catch bases, and it's being diverted to the-
They're putting down catch bases under, under my part of the road?
Not on your part of the road. They're putting the catch bases on their road. And they're, and the town is-
And now, Mr. Post owns this, which I sold to him. And they're gonna put that big thing here, and they're gonna run the water over his property?
No, the water is going to be dispersed into the ground.
Post doesn't.
Yeah, he does.
You can't tell me when there's tons of water, and it's dispersed. Boom.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Hill, before you sit down, we didn't get your name and address for the record.
Warner Hill, seventy-three Curtis Street.
Thank you, sir.
But the last time that that road, that road is getting terrible. Right now, all the curbs are all messed up. Now, when Mr. Post was gonna do this project, he was gonna take care of Curtis Street. He was gonna, why aren't somebody else taking care of our road? We're gonna, I've been here forty-three years, and it's been tied once.
Through the chair, the section where you live is private, so it's-
I understand that.
Not responsibility.
So, take over the road.
Like, again, we don't-
We can't do that.
Just take over private roads.
So, we're the forgotten few. What if we're willing to pay for it, like I had a few years ago?
Then, if you're willing to pay for it, then what you do is just pay for it, bring it up to standard, and the town will probably accept it.
Right.
But you gotta get the person on the other side of the street.
Now, you're not, now you own the South Hall Road and all of it, right? Are you gonna improve that road?
We don't own all of it.
Yeah, we don't know what, what the forward plan is yet for that property.
We own a few lots there. The town owns the rest of it. And the town is not planning on anything done with it at this point. All right, so, pleasure of the board. Thank you very much.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Close the hearing, okay.
Well, before we close, what are you talking, what are we talking about? For what part of the road are they gonna have to improve? So, just the entire length of their frontage?
Yeah, that's for the board to decide. Correct.
Yep. Close the hearing? Is it made and seconded? All right, all those in favor closing the hearing? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's closed. All right, now, what we're gonna do, hopefully?
Mr. Chairman, can you just confirm who's seconding that? All right, I missed it, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so, what is the pleasure of the board? They've pretty much agreed to work with Bill.
Yeah. My thought on this is, for a seven-unit subdivision, it's hard to, at some point, you have to draw a line as to what's the responsibility of the developer, what's, you know, the responsibility of the people who have the private control of the private road in that area. You know, I think the compromise that they've come up with, or that they seem to be agreeing with, with the town engineer, is a fair one, in which they bring up the private street to a standard up to the access point for their, for their new subdivision road that would then be accepted. I, I really, I've been down there several times now. I really do not see any, if not mo, if some, of the traffic going on the South Hall roadside. I think, you know, everybody's gonna be going to Packard Chalk Street. And, you know, I think that's a reasonable compromise. I also think it's a good improvement for the area in that it will no longer be a private road in that area, and it would be an improvement to the residents, and some of the issues that have been brought up and addressed would be corrected. I just, I don't know that we can require them to-
Oh, we can require them to do it.
I guess I might, I would amend that, and I don't know that it would be fair to require them to, you know, go in.
Well, Jonathan, my thought is, and contention is, that it's not fair to ask someone else to do their part of the road if any of those lower people ever come for anything, whether it's Post that owns those four lots, or Mr. Hill, or, or the town when they go to fix South Hall Road and possibly develop it. It's not fair for anyone else to have to do their part of the road. We'd be saying, well, you're gonna have to bring it up to there, because it's happened before in a couple of instances.
Now, what's-
Just not fair.
What's the length from, what's the length to the edge of your property of the road?
Note that this hearing is now closed. The hearing is closed. Yeah. Just wanna make sure that. So, what does that mean? So, we can still- You can deliberate, yes. Okay. Are you saying we can't ask any other questions? Can ask interdepartmental questions.
Who asked about the length of the road?
Bill, do you know what the length of the road is?
Yeah, I was doing a quick calculation.
From their property line up to where we've already-
In other words, they're gonna work from their entrance into that private street, and they're gonna go up to the public street, and they're gonna help, and work with the town on that side.
Two hundred and twenty-three.
Two hundred and twenty-three. What's your entire frontage on that?
Entire frontage is-
Approximately two hundred and sixty-five.
Two sixty-five. And where does your road come in?
A hundred, a hundred and, a hundred and, we affect a hundred and nine, roughly a hundred and nine.
Through the, through the chair, we would, what Mr. Brooks is referring to, you would add a hundred and eighty-five feet of paving. So, essentially, what we're currently asking is that they upgrade Curtis Street to a standard acceptable by, assuming the DBW engineer and myself, and the planning board, to this point here, which is their curb return. If you then required them to, if the roadway was adequate to just overlay the separate portion, it would be a distance of, would we just say a hundred and eighty?
Eighty-five.
Hundred and eighty-five feet.
Bill, do you have a sense of, you know, what type of cost are we talking about here?
That's really just-
I just want ecog is in a-
What am I overlaying of weather, an inch, a two inches?
Hundred and eighty, was it? Hundred and eighty-five?
Hundred and eighty-five.
That's the other three hundred and seventy.
Twenty. Maybe five thousand dollars, at a hundred and twenty dollars a ton, an inch and a half next.
Inch and a half.
And I'm glad we got there, engineer, see what he comes up with.
Do you have a sense of-
But there may be structures that have to be raised out there.
Do you, do you have a sense of the cost, the other components that we've already talked about?
No, that's, that's harder to calculate.
No, that's hard to calculate. I think their engineer came up with some rough numbers of what he thought it might be. I would say that additional portion could be anywhere from five to ten thousand. Ten being on the high end, five probably being on the lower end to add that section.
So that would just be in addition to what they're already planning on doing. So another five to ten thousand dollars.
Roughly, yes. Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven. Matt's bringing it up to standard.
That would just be an overlay for that--
That's an overlay.
That section.
Because that part of the roadway you're saying is pretty much, just needs--
By recollection, I didn't come tonight with knowing that, you know, to what extent we were gonna talk about that. I believe that segment is in fair condition, and I think really wouldn't be to ask of them to do more than that. So, and I think it's in pretty good condition compared to the rest of the road, that an overlay would bring it to a standard where we could recommend acceptance of that portion.
Just a point of order for the board.
Yep.
It may be in the board's best interest to have the staff prepare the proper way to lay out the decision and conditions at the later hearing. You don't have to render your decision this evening.
Yep.
So as long as the public hearing is closed, you still have time to render your decision and the conditions. Apart from that, you also have to vote whether or not to accept five waivers that were requested by the applicant, and go through nine different parts of the subdivision rules and regs, to make sure that this board action is compliant.
And they're going to--
It may be in the--
Conservation when?
The fourth.
Well, the eighth.
Matt, you said five waivers?
Tree plant, staking of the center road, right-of-way width, sidewalks, and the dead-end street. February 12th.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
They just need to vote on each thing.
Correct.
That just takes time.
Correct. That's what the board would want to do today. It's up to you. I'm just making a recommendation.
What is your recommendation again?
My recommendation would be to--
Postpone it?
It's not a postponement. Hearing's closed. This would be to render your opinions on the decision and your conditions at a later hearing, or perhaps after the rest of the public hearings are heard today, we can do it at the end of the day. It's up to you.
I think, I just wanna do it while it's kind of fresh in my head. I wouldn't want to wait a week or even an hour when we have other things-- What would be the process at this point? It would be to vote on the waivers first.
Vote on the waivers, yes.
I think, first of all, I just wanna make sure I understand, on the waivers, they put a sidewalk in on one side of the road--
Correct.
Instead of two.
They're looking for a waiver from having to do on the second side.
On both sides of the street, yes.
And there's not one on Curtis Street at this point, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That's a waiver if granted, or a motion for a waiver, section four point one-one.
All right, I would make a motion to the board to approve the waivers.
But that's only one, Jonathan.
That's one.
One.
I can't do all of the other.
No.
We're gonna hit one.
You have to hear one of the other five.
Fast track, then. Do we have another public hearing? Waiting.
Okay.
I just, it's my recommendation.
All right. Will we go through them one at a time?
Section three point three point two point one Q is a tree plant applicant seeking a waiver to locate all existing trees with trunks over twelve feet in diameter, twelve inches in diameter. The site has a large number of trees, it would be in a common car should the applicants have them, I'll survey it.
Would they have to, excuse me, what would you have to do, survey them?
Locate all existing trees with trunks over twelve inches in diameter--
Just locate them.
Put them on their site plan, yes.
In other words, they're not on the site plan now. They're there, and they're not cutting them down.
We're not cutting them down.
They're not cutting them down. They're there, they're not cutting them down, but they're not located on their plan.
Can we put a condition on that they're not allowed to cut any trees over twelve inches? Or are there ones that are in the way of what you're gonna do?
We would only, only the ones that would be within the foundation perimeter.
Yeah.
We can condition that then after.
Yeah.
Our desire is to leave the forest.
Trees, yeah.
We want a tree. We don't want to clearcut it and make a field, and then come back in and put ornamental trees back in.
Okay, so that--
So that's two.
Okay, well, we didn't vote on it, yeah.
We didn't vote on the first one.
No.
So why don't I make the motion to approve the waiver--
For the trees.
Regarding the trees.
Trees, okay, is it seconded?
Second.
Second, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's passed. Next one.
Waiver two, section three point three point two point one T, so staking of the center line of the roadway. The applicant seeking a waiver to stake the center line of the roadway at the time of filing the plan. So right now, it wasn't staked because there was three feet of stone in the ground.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Okay, make a motion, all right.
Second.
And second, motion's been made and seconded, that we waive that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Section four point two point five point one, it's a right-of-way width, applicant seeking a waiver of a forty-foot right-of-way, and lower than requested fifty feet of our subdivision.
Okay. That's the engineering part we feel about. They wanna--
I think that if the, if the board is going to approve the waiver for the one sidewalk, then the forty-foot right-of-way--
It's all right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, is made, seconded, that we waive that, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Okay, section four point one-one is the sidewalks requirement for having both.
So make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
One sidewalk, made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's gone.
Final waiver request, section four point two point seven point three for dead-end street. The applicant's requesting a waiver for the requirement of providing an easement beyond the edge of the dead-end road to the adjacent property. This is what Joanna and I, Joanna had brought to the attention of the board about. This is mostly in here for large parcels of land that are still remaining when carved out, subdivision's carved out.
Is that where they have to provide an easement--
Correct.
--into the other person's property?
Correct, yeah.
And the other person's property is landlocked.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion's been made to approve.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So you don't need to render the decision then?
We don't have to render the decision?
We can choose if they want to or not.
But should we wait till they come back from conservation? Yeah.
Is that just a time management thing? Is everything--
Well, you can't do anything till concrete gives you whatever you need.
Right.
Right.
The actual overlap is not the wetlands itself, it's just the buffer zone, and they just wanted to go out and be able to get their--
Look at it.
Huh?
They just wanted to go look at it.
Yeah, just wanna go out and look at it, and then they'll tell us on the eighth what their findings are, so it's--
I would make a motion to approve the board's stand with the standard conditions, along with the additional conditions, that DPW complete their review of the hydrology, or favorable letter on the review of the hydrology calculations, that they, help me on the wording, on this, complete the widening of the public portion of the Curtis Street improvements as dictated by--
The five foot.
The DPW director, and that they bring the private section of Curtis Street to a public standard.
Now, how far?
The entire length of the frontage?
To the entire length of the--
Just for the board. I don't mean to interrupt you, Jonathan, I'm sorry. The timeline for this preliminary subdivision plan is one hundred and thirty-five days for when the board has to file its certificate of action, definitive subdivision plan, the hearing to be closed within that time, it's just that's our timeline to file this. So the board does have time to view planning board's decision on their RDA, should they choose to do so. That hundred and thirty-fifth day is, when do we calculate it? May twenty-fifth.
It's late in May.
Right. So, and I'm not saying, I'm not trying to drag this up, believe me, it's just, do have time to hear conservation opinion if that is your choice.
Well, and if we have time after this next hearing, we can still discuss the other-- that's not major.
Right. And I further-- I'd like to further bring to the board's, this, my three point two point four wetland boundary elimination that I mentioned at the beginning of this hearing, so it's, board strongly recommends the applicants has their wetlands approvals in order prior to this. So again--
One of our standard conditions is all the village commissions, right?
Sure.
So I guess I would see how the board felt about the motion on the table, see if we can just get this done and move on.
Through the chair, Jonathan, your motion was to upgrade the entire frontage?
Yes.
I guess so, yep, okay.
All right.
Is it other pieces of that motion, Jonathan, to do everything?
Well, it was the three that I wrote down, so I don't know if any of the other members had friendly amendment.
You have something else?
You wanna put something in about the trees, other than where the foundations and roadway is, trees in excess of twelve inches?
Well, obviously, it's gotta be the perimeter of the foundation, the driveway. It can't be held at the perimeter of the foundation.
If they're done, and then there's massive land, we're gonna trust that you would not--
Okay.
Incidental to constructing the houses, roadway, driveways, drainage.
There's a reference, you can talk to Bill. And we'll get--
All right, so what else do we have?
Standard working hours.
Construction hours. Construction hours.
Eight to four thirty, Monday through Friday, eight to twelve on Saturday, Sundays or holidays.
Approval of all the other boards and commissions.
Any modifications to the plan require?
Come back. Any modifications to the plan, you have to return here.
The, another standard condition would be that it, the applicant adheres to the plan before the board today.
And do all the standard hay rails and all that stuff, you know that your upgrade of property that's there, Mr. Hill had a problem already with water, and I'm not sure about the other gentleman. I don't think Mr. Coyle does.
You're gonna get together with the engineering department, okay, and work that out.
Should we also put a name on the acceptance of the land?
Part of this, part of this process, they will have to post a bond for the project accordance.
The town will never pay for any taking or cut?
Well, I think the town owns one side, and that he owns the other.
Do we have to get permission from all of the people who own the other half of the road to do this work?
Well, who owns the other half of the road? The town--
Well, the town does, but it also--
The first hundred feet.
I would defer that, you know, through the chair, we reach out to town council, but my understanding is, having gone through this process before, that if you have frontage along the roadway, you have a right to upgrade and to improve the roadway. I don't believe you necessarily need any permission from the property across the street. I think we ran into this again on Santa Street, where the entire roadway was resurfaced without any approvals from the--
They're not taking any of their property.
That looked like a pretty nice job.
Operating within the right-of-way.
Yeah.
All right. And I suspect that, that they're not able to be objectional to, objectional to the upgrade.
All right. Anything else?
Well, can he speak? I'm not sure.
The hearing is closed.
The hearing is closed. Just one little request. There's something about the plans or anything.
It can be, you can speak, but the board doesn't have to take it into consideration. Because the hearing's closed, just to be honest.
Just no heavy equipment going up Curtis Street from South Hole. The road can't take it. They have the same conditions that we had--
They can't bring it in by helicopter.
Well, they can come down first. It went up the road, and--
Well, they're not gonna come down South Hole Road to go up.
Just a request.
Okay, so are we finished with the conditions now?
Did we hit everything?
Yeah, did we hit everything? Read them back to us.
Conditions, conditional on the favorable review of the stormwater report from the town engineer, that the five-foot widening of the public road, as agreed between the applicant and the engineer, the private portion of Curtis Street from the public portion south along the entire frontage of Seventy-One Curtis, upgraded for approval or acceptance as public.
Yeah, with the highway department, with the town engineer.
Mm-hmm. That tree cutting greater than twelve inches of diameter is allowed incidental to construction of houses, roadway, driveway, drainage, and utilities.
Correct.
Approval of all boards and commissions.
Correct.
Any modifications to the plan must be approved by the planning board, and that the subdivision be constructed in accordance to the plan dated March twenty-fifth, twenty-fifteen.
And did we also--
Put hours.
Does that include the hundred-and-eighty-five feet of that, of the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Construction hours, standard.
Eight, okay, yeah.
All right. Is that it?
Stop reading.
Okay.
And your motion included the entire frontage?
Yes, did.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion's been made with all this, yes.
Matt's just, we hit it all.
Let me show you guys everything.
We're gonna have the hearing.
Board has several conditions in there. Four conditions that they may want to consider as their standard conditions for subdivisions. I just say the board should accept the, or should consider the condition of all items described in section three point three point eleven, which is the conditions section of the definitive subdivision plan filing. It's, board may as a condition granting approval, impose reasonable requirements, conditions set, grades, limitations, design, promote health convenience, maybe a benefit. Board may determine the applicant should be responsible for construction, funding, and public improvements. Permanent condition approval, board should indicate it approves, it's very standard language that covers--
If it's already in the regs, I would--
Yeah.
And we didn't waive it, isn't it?
No, it's not waived.
Any condition to say the applicant should abide by all conditions herein set forth by our subdivision rules and regulations.
Okay, yeah, okay. The regs, yep.
So, uh, so amended.
Okay, so the motion's been made and it's been seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
So vote it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll get together with Bill and, and hammer out that other stuff.
Yeah, thank you very much. We'll draft the decision. We'll draft the decision, we'll bring it to the next meeting for signatures. Absolutely.
This stuff is to figure out how to get them out of there. Get Bill hopping sign back.
I put them up for, for dogs. And they're dogs. And the dog just
We had one, we had one up on and the guy says, Jesus, you're making me, you're you are a house, a house, I don't know, nobody ever do nothing, how do you want me to start working, and then you get out the you couldn't even tell you what it was. It was just turning on
Yeah, it's got any The one lot, frontage.
Okay. Next title. Application.
Sorry, gentlemen. I just didn't want to come back to it.
Next.
My only concern, John, was I didn't want to leave it in galley. Just headers. I cannot Want to make sure it's from the back.
Okay. Next. Mr. David Pappas, a dependent of subdivision plan new for a five-lot subdivision off West Street, Auburn, Mass, assesses Mass fifty-three, parcel seven, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Mr. Broder? Attorney Broder?
Thank you, Mr. Broder.
Thank you, Mr. David. Taking a motion to open air.
Second.
Second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Broder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Lawrence Broder from the law firm of Fletcher Tilton, representing David Pappas, on this application for a Hamlet, Hamlet State subdivision approval. As I said, the property owner is David Pappas, he's here and present. Met Dennis Rice previously from McClure Engineering that did the engineering work. If you remember, appeared in front of you with a preliminary plan back in October of two thousand fourteen. It's a five-foot lot subdivision located on approximately twenty-six acres of land on West Street, which is north of the turnpike, in the area of about one hundred and twenty-five West Street. Five new lots vary in size from almost fifteen acres to one point five acres. Their two are about one and a half, one or two and a half, and one are about three and a half, the other are almost fifteen. All lots have a hundred eighty-four frontage, which complies with our zoning in the area. All have at least sixty thousand square feet, which complies with the zoning in the area. As we discussed back in October, and will present again, these lots have all had circulation tests performed, because there'll be onsite sewerage, and those were all, those tests were observed by the board of health. The plan originally was to have a public water in the subdivision, but the street was, West Street was paved last year.
And you won't open that?
No, no opening. Somebody says no opening is, opening in five years is a good idea, so there'll be wells. We, we asked back in October for your consideration of three, of three waivers, is actually, we're going to ask for another one tonight. Those waivers are for minor road width in one small portion, which Dennis will point out to you again. One small portion right of way is, is a few inches shy of the fifty-foot requirement. We're asking for a waiver of sidewalks on the lots that already have frontage on West Street. Asking for an increase in length of the dead-end street from eight hundred to nine hundred and eighty-six point two five feet. And the other waiver is going to deal with the amount of cover over drainage pipes in one area on the property. The notice, there's a notice of intent filing been made, that's, that's in front of the zoning, excuse me, the conservation commission at this time. And back in October, we reviewed these, these waiver requests and the preliminary plan, the board indicate, although the board, although the board did not vote, they indicated that they found the waiver request to be very reasonable. So with that, I'm going to ask Dennis to redo the plan.
The definitive plan submission that's in front of you, it was advanced from the preliminary plan that Larry spoke to, pretty much the way you saw it in October. The length of the roads is same, the number of lots, the general layout, we provided the detailed information in compliance with the definitive subdivision rules and regulations. I'd like to thank the planning department for getting it out to the peer consultant for a review, and we have received the peer review comments back through the planning board. We are currently responding to his comments. Most of his comments are pertinent, with minor revisions, which we're in the process of making already. I think we can satisfy the peer consulting comments, each one of them. I'd take the time and go over them now, but I, I don't think we need to do that unless you'd like to. We plan to meet tonight, discuss the project with your board, see if there was any other comments. Once we receive all the comments, we will make the edits to the plan and get it back to the planning department for circulation to a peer consultant, but I believe that we'll be able to satisfy among most comments. The waiver request that we have asked for, we've abutted our right-of-way along the back property of two parcels on, from West Street. Their property line has an angle point rather than a radius. At this point here, we do have a radius and a centerline radius, and an approximate width of, I think it's about point, a point one foot short of the fifty foot at that point, so we're asking for a waiver of a horizontal curve there for that reason. So we get a butter right up to the abutts property line. The property lays out, so would ask for a increase in length of the subdivision road to access the back part of the property to cite five lots in the development. As I mentioned, we're before Conservation Commission, we have applied for two
Crossings?
Crossings of the BBW in these locations, and that's under review with the Conservation Commission right now. Much of this area has been disturbed in the past, which is in the proposed right-of-way. There is an existing outbuilding about in this location, a storage building on a property that will be torn down. There's already the basis of a drive access that's been used by Mr. Pappas for construction and the likes of that. We have designed a stormwater management system to collect the roadway drainage at the low point, and that is one reason we're requesting the relief from a four-foot of cover on drainage pipes. We're confined by the elevation of where we exit the detention area, and for us to get four feet of cover in this area here, we would have to raise the road a foot, and because of the vertical curves, we'd have to raise the road most of length, the grading and the filling would be more excessive than we think is required. Many communities accept three-foot of cover, and that's what we're asking for at that location. We maintain the four feet of cover where we could down towards the low point of the street. The stormwater management report has been submitted to the consultant, he had a few comments on that. We've reviewed those comments, and we can satisfy those as well. We plan to submit an addendum to the stormwater management report to his office. We're complying with the treatment of water, not, not increasing the rate of runoff, infiltration of water. It is in an aquifer zone, so we have to treat one inch instead of a half an inch because of that, we're doing that. We're using a, a pre-treatment to the basin, a commercial particle separator type storm set up to get some of our treatment, and we've designed a infiltration detention basin to give us the infiltration and some further treatment. The treatment coming out of this, we're receiving ninety-two percent suspended solid removal to that effect, so we're in full compliance with the Massachusetts stormwater management policy. I think it opened up for questions at this time, unless you don't
Number seven of Graves' comment, they have that Hamlet Lane, Hamlet Lane is a proposed dead-end street greater than the maximum permissible length of five hundred feet. Isn't it eight hundred feet, man?
It is.
I think that's just an error.
Right, that, that's an error. I didn't pick up on that either. I said, I don't think we're that
Because you're looking for eight ninety-six?
Right, it's eight hundred. Just for the record through the chair, we haven't had an opportunity to look forward to that review at this point, so it'll probably be sometime later this weekend to next week. So just, we would defer any of our comments until we've had a chance to go through it.
Now, does that, the drainage, the three-foot drainage, does that get us below the frost line?
I'm not concerned with the drainage line, I think, is it three feet even, Dennis, that you have for cover? To the top of cover. To the top cover. I mean, typically, when someone looks for a waiver for cover, I'd recommend class five concrete pipe, just for
It's not a problem.
Okay.
Full floor
But you haven't looked at it yet anyway, so
Right, right, right.
Yeah, the class of, whatever your comment was to that, we provide that.
And then the, the other question I just, I had was, the storm's up, Dennis, where is that located? Is that in the roadway?
No, it's
Which one?
It's actually off the road here. This is actually a rendering, it doesn't show the detail, I can pull the detail plans off, but it's just off the road here, near the sidewalk there.
The, the only comment that I would have was that is, we have to use our VAC truck to maintain that, so depending on how far off the road it is, if it's in the roadway, it may be easier for us to pull the truck up to, to, to clean it?
I, I believe we get pretty good angles.
You know, it's basically a manhole
Yep.
But designed to capture more sediment, and so we have to use a VAC truck to clean
Actually, we have an access drive into the basin for maintaining, it's, it's right there.
Yeah, if you can, if you can put it in the roadway, be, and take a look at it, it's going to be, the truck we use is a good-sized truck. To get in there is not going to be the easiest thing for him to do, and it's heavy, so if it's, if it's not paved, he's going to have difficulty getting in and out of there.
In the sidewalk area, whatever?
Sidewalk would be okay.
Quite off the curb. I'll have to move the structure out into the road.
Yeah, just take a look at it, Dennis, I mean, ideally in the roadway. But if it had to be in the sidewalk, we could look at the sidewalk. Yeah, it's a good-sized truck, to pull it off-road is going to be difficult.
David, the lots where you're doing the crossing, is the, is that like a run-in brook, or is it just sit near water?
Just, just
Sitting there.
The driveway crossing?
It's not like it sweeps through kind of, just, you know, it doesn't really, it's not really
No, I'm just wondering, we only had one like up off Sunnyside that they asked for a crossing that was there, I'm just wondering how they are with that, but
There's no defined stream.
Yeah.
Very, very wet condition, maybe, standing in water. Most of the water comes down through, through the back of the hill here, and that takes most of the flow, even from up in here, most of the flow goes that way. But that, that's a maple swamp type wetland.
Through the chair, how much, Dennis, are you filling for each lot, for wellens?
It's in our notice, we have, we're, we're under the five thousand square feet, we're replicating.
And you have, so have you been trying before conservation yet?
We are before, apparently.
Have you met with them?
We've met with them once.
Okay.
We extended it for this hearing process. We, when's our next meeting? We're altering twelve hundred square feet at this cross and nineteen forty-five at that horizon.
Okay.
And have a wellen replication of four eight hundred square feet.
Questions?
No, one more question for the chair. Name of the street was, that done through the town clerk, the street selection verification?
What's that?
The name of the road, was it chosen through three, through the town clerk?
No, I haven't.
Okay, how did the name choose?
I made it up.
Okay.
My mother's reading Shakespeare, so
Okay. The town clerk has to go through and choose one of the three names, standard process with the town clerk's office, so
I have a big two more?
Yes.
Yeah, you give your preferred
They have to make sure it's not in town, already.
If it's not in town, then
Then she'll approve it. But it's just, it's something we require.
It's a standard
All right. So Hamlet will be at the, the top, that's your preferred name, and then just two more.
Okay.
And she'll, if it doesn't exist, there shouldn't be an issue.
You'll end up with a late street, late out, late drive.
Exactly.
Coil bowl.
That would be okay, coil circle, you could do it.
Dennis, through the chair, we went over some of the letters in the subdivision road regs, just to make sure that those changes were made since we last spoke, since I didn't get the updates of the plans. These are some of the qualifications that I'm tasked with reviewing prior to the submission of the application, but you mentioned that any of these would be added, and I just want to bring any attention to the board, if that's okay? There was a space for the signatures on the plans?
Yeah, we've added those.
Right.
And we will be, like I said, after this meeting, we will be providing the edited plans to your
Beautiful, that's great. Just touch on the four-foot vertical scale instead of the eight-foot, I thought the eight-foot might have been too much.
I'm an old highway designer, and usually the forty and eight is a reasonable scale. It's five times, the vertical is five times the horizontal, usually. It, it just makes things bigger on our profile.
If I could, I think that was, I could add, Dennis, that when you use the croup sticks for profiles, that forty and eight?
What's that?
When you use, use the croup sticks for the profile?
Right, forty and eight, you know what I mean? And that, that's the normal scale in most plans, and it shows the information. It's a distorted scale, this scale is eight times, I mean, five times this scale. You're asking for a scale that would be ten times the horizontal scale. It just, in my opinion, warps it so it, it doesn't look like you can even understand what
I, I agree with that.
Okay, I just wanted to hear your opinion, too. I appreciate it.
Being an old highway person myself, it was always forty and eight. The subdivision standards are typically different.
That may be something that the board would want to
Things get accepted, and I, I know your rules and regulations have been rewritten since I was here last, and some of these, they get adopted and you say, why, I'm the engineer, I just bring it before your board, and you have your professional here saying the same thing, you can show the detail, you, and that, there's no need for that to be twice as big on my plan, in my mind.
Right, I agree.
Okay, anything else?
The other one, I, I'm sorry, I stepped out during the waivers, Mr. Broder. There was a tree plant, one of them?
Was that the
Trees over twelve inches in diameter, is it a waiver, is that something? I missed, I missed the waivers.
We, we haven't asked for that waiver. You mean that, you mean identifying all the twelve-inch trees? We haven't, we have not asked for that one.
We haven't, we, we probably want to ask for that. The area within the roadway is, I don't think there's any trees over twelve inches. Possibly, it could be a few right in here.
You can see the progress.
And this is basically cleared now.
Right.
There's actually a long pile here.
Now, is that, does that gray snake there, does that represent an access road or something at this point?
Yes.
And your road pretty much follows it?
Yes, well, it's going to be in a lot of that
Yeah.
Right now through here.
All right, it doesn't look like any trees.
But these lots, those don't come through here.
Yeah, that's a pretty good aerial view, no trees.
It also looks like an auto aerial photo.
This is all clear here, too, and it's cleared out through here.
Looks like I see deciduous trees and just, kind of, on the map.
Oh, nice, he recognizes trees from the aerial photo, holy cow.
Trees with leaves, trees without leaves, those look like pine trees that you can see.
Yeah, it is.
I'm just saying.
All right.
Anyways, so erosion control plan, that was going to be added, that didn't appear to be on the plan.
I'm sure you did that already, I saw the ABL portion of that, and that's fine.
Stake centerline, same, same issue with the stake centerline, because we, there was snow on the ground. Is that a waiver request, or is this going to be on the plan, now that it's, now that it's not as snowy, I presume? Just wanted to
I think we asked for that waiver, too. I mean, you can walk the access, and you can see pretty much where the road is going. It's in, it's in the drive access, but it's up to your board. The client's going to have it staked anyways, so it's just a matter of whether you need it for your viewing or not at this time. It's been frozen ground all, we couldn't do what we want.
There are some stakes that Lecrae put in before that are already established from the sideline, that's the RAs.
Okay.
The way, but there, towards the color second, a couple halfway and
Just wanted to bring the board's attention that, Dennis, and I did go over this stuff, and that those changes were being made.
Anything else? Anything else?
Seems that
But you haven't had a chance to look at the things yet.
Right, in, in great
Great detail, okay.
Well, between, by the end of next week, we should have
Okay, great, I hope not, we, we Two weeks, yeah, two weeks, though.
Okay, yeah, we could just, we could wait until Dennis has an opportunity to address Graves' comments, so he's not sending it to us, and then
Right.
Views kind of not happening concurrently, so if Graves has already looked at it once, it would make sense for, once you address their comments, to send it to us, and we'll do a review of that.
Yeah, okay.
It'd be helpful to us if we had your comments, so we don't have to revise plans twice, Bill. We're all set for the
You have that option, if you want to wait, I mean, it's just, it's going to be probably sometime toward the end of next week.
I mean, if we print for the next meeting, then you have comments, and then we trigger
It's just a matter of when you want to continue the meeting until, because chances are, if we have our review done by the end of next week, and then we send it back to you, to you, and then you revise them and get them back to us, you're probably looking at four, five weeks timeline, so
And that's two meetings next month.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, we have two meetings next month.
What chances are that comments are going to be similar to Graves' comments? Most of the time, it's more of the BBW side that, that's more critical, that, like, we might not have on. not happen on...
Right. So when would we... one of your meetings in May?
Fourteenth to the twenty-eighth.
There's no point, I'm not going to be here on the fourteenth.
Jimmy should be back tomorrow.
When's the second meeting in April?
April 28.
Would we be able to get your comments? And I don't mind, I don't mind shipping you off the draft revisions to...
You could continue to the 28th, and depending on the extent of the comments, could everything wrapped up by then? Worst-case scenario, you could continue to another meeting.
Another week, not a week.
I would propose that we do send out, like, to planning, to circulation, to Graves, and maybe to Bill's Department, the revisions that we've made to these current comments, but wait for his comments until we provide final edits.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Can we go to the 28th, Mr. Chair?
If that's what you'd like, this.
Motion to continue open hearing to April 28.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
And it's been seconded to the 28th. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. I support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got it.
That it, stuff for minutes? Special Camden Wood.
Okay. So I'm going to... I'm going to hold off on this Camden Wood thing, because I spoke to the developer last week, and he was not able to meet with me Monday, and his family is not here today. There was a town meeting warrant article, but it's going to be pushed off until fall town meeting anyway, so we have time to talk.
This one is to...
I did add something on here, we don't have to get too far into it, but just language about the mullin rule, which we exercised earlier today, for when you decide. I think the Board understands how that works. Mr. Brooks asked last meeting about emergency scenarios wherein another vote could be used, if necessary, if there were excesses, absences, who cares?
There was necessity.
Right. So, long story short, the rule...
It just came up.
Right.
What was the other one that was...
The rule of necessity reads that if there's an item with a timeline, such as a subdivision, where a vote had to be cast by a certain time, and there were, there was no form to make the votes, that an abstained member could cast their vote under the rule of necessity, or an elected official who attended all the meetings could be voting. But any of those areas, there are abstains, other than three town watching, if it comes to that. There are no abstentions, and that's not an exception. So the rule of necessity would not apply if there was an excessive situation like that.
Okay.
Just wanted to...
Would not.
Right. Unless there was an abstained party or an elected official at all cases.
I went through the State Ethics Commission a couple of times, and I did it. It just advises you what to say or do, and then you reveal it at the beginning of the meeting, and accuse you.
Correct. Correct. I just want to... we have minutes.
Okay. The motions been made, we approved February 10th minutes.
Otherwise, we're going to keep it.
Twenty-second?
Sure.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
March 10th?
One modification that Eric and I pointed out already, he already knows what it is.
Okay, what's the modification?
It's the date, it's number, Bill.
Twenty-fourteen is the 2015.
Yeah, this isn't on top of the page.
So a motion's been made, we accept those minutes, and seconded, who seconded?
I did.
Mr. Brooks, second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, those are accepted. I'd expect another motion.
Any other comments engineering while we're here?
All these letters, well done with them, the letters, this correspondence.
No, that's just the things...
Those were the things for all the stuff we...
So making motion to adjourn.
That's a good one. The motions been made and seconded, we do adjourn, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Square race, second that.